Okay, I got six o'clock, so here we go. Like to call this meeting to order for showing Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. Hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. In attendance, we have Dan Blaisdell, alternate, sitting in as full board member tonight. Conrad Decker, myself, Buck Donovan, Dave Forrest, and on Zoom is Peter Blum. In the office, in the audience, Land Use Assistant, Brooke Healy, Kathy Hall, and sir, your name?
Brian Sider from Forsyth.
Brian Sider from Forsyth. Okay. Any public comments? Just listening, Kathy?
Just listening.
Okay. Moving on to minutes.
There is one change that Peter suggested, which I used the wrong poll. I said P O L L instead of P O L E in one of the sections.
Okay. Do I have a motion as amended? Make a motion and accept them as amended. Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Going around the room, Dan?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Up Donovan, aye.
Minutes are in. What you doing? So early.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, there's Forsyth. Yeah, we could, we could do him. Yeah. You're with Cage Street, right?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do the site plan amendment. Show us what you have, get you out of here.
All right, so. Yeah, Brian Sider from Forsyth. We're here in July for a special permit to approve this three and a half acre solar installation on Cage Street. On the existing gravel bed next to I- I'm sorry, I ninety. And after discussions with EverSource about the interconnection, essentially we just revised the number of utility poles that are required to get to the site because they have a maximum span distance of hundred feet. So in doing that, added one pole here. Moved, well, I moved this pole closer to the first one, added a new pole in the middle, and a second pole was added up here north of the, this is where we're doing direct pouring underneath the national grid. Yeah, so we're adding two poles, and the only other addition was that we enlarged the size of the concrete pad to fit their equipment. So just wanted to. Confirm that we're making these changes, make sure they're all right. Special permit so we can continue forward. The intent is to start construction this summer, just waiting on some DOTX as permits and also the permit to do this work. Utility easement. So.
How are they with that?
Just making us do some more surveying and stuff.
Yeah.
So.
I guess double grant over New York, wanting to try to do that. Unreal. Yeah, but anyway, I.
It's been a process, but.
I mean, this, this looks normal.
We went to the Conservation Commission, same thing, because the poles are in the wetland buffer. They were all plugged with it. Outside.
Anybody else? Conrad?
We have a time sealed plan.
There's an updated plan, doesn't have these highlights on it.
It's the folded sheets right there.
Just long as you got it.
Right there.
These ones?
Actually, I think I don't have the highlights.
That was just an internet copy when I printed that, but the other one's.
Revised date?
Twelve thirteen, I think it should be, twelve nineteen. It was revised back in December, just wanted to make sure.
I'm seeing a four eleven. Okay. Okay, great. Marcus, got you. Hey, Dave, anything?
Nothing.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm at home due to an illness, and I have missed just about everything that's been said and assumed. So can we start at fairly basic level, you're proposing a site plan review or a special permit or nothing?
The revisions to the original site plan as approved under a special permit. So it's just an additional two utility poles that weren't there.
Okay. And what, what site is this?
Fourteen thirty-five Cage Street, it's right behind the Beaver Storage.
Oh, okay, this is the big, the big one up next to the Mass Bike?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not that.
Yep, all right, and so it sounds like you need a, an amendment to your special permit, is that right?
We need an approved amendment for the revisions.
Correct.
Yeah. And does anybody know if we have to make the full spreader of findings in order to do that, or can we just approve it as a minor adjustment?
I would think just a minor on this. It's just a couple of telephone poles. Over to appeal.
When it's a special permit, the applicant gets a letter after the decision is made saying you're approved according to a plan. So would we expect to issue a revised letter similar to the first one if this is approved?
I would think so, yes.
And that, often those are filed in the land records, so the owner may want to do that with our letter. It's up to him, of course, but, okay. And just adding a couple of poles, is that it?
Two poles and enlarging the concrete pad, so.
And what is, what is the reason for the poles?
It's per comments we got from EverSource, it's just the way they want to do it, the spacing was too wide in between.
Okay.
Spectacle engineer originally drew up the plan, so EverSource just wants less, less spacing between them and more space on it.
Good, thank you, that's all I have.
Motion, wait, accept amended amendments to the plan stated.
Yes. Revisions over. Well, nineteen twenty-three. Yes. Is this the known here?
Let's revise the twenty-two.
Yeah.
The top.
The top. Yeah, nineteen twenty-three. Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Dan seconds. Any further discussion? Going around the room, Dan?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Up Donovan, aye.
Okay, great. Becky, you're beginning a letter that approved the amended revisions. Or recorded. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, I think the letter should reference the date and identity of the paper that was displayed tonight, just so the record is clear that there's another plan that's been approved than the one that was originally approved.
Oh, yes, definitely, yeah. Exactly. See, Peter, do you have anything? Five minutes?
From Master. Yeah, I can, I can do it less than that. It's pretty much, as I said last time, we, we have been meeting twice a month, but we're getting to the point now where there's a lot of work for the staff at the very end, so we only are meeting once in February, in the last day of February. And a week before that, the staff has promised us a complete draft of the whole thing, which we haven't seen before, we've seen parts of it, and perhaps every part, I'm not sure, but we've never seen the whole thing all at once. And the committee will have a week to read it, and then we'll meet on the last day of February, the twenty-ninth. And I'm hoping that we will then vote to approve it for a public hearing, which will be on Saturday, I think it's the thirtieth of March. And then we'll have one more meeting to act on any changes that people want, and then it'll come to the planning board sometime in April.
That sounds great. Getting there.
Yeah, it took, it took a year and a half, but we're getting close to the end, and I don't know, you know, it's possible that there'll be general revulsion when we have our public hearing, and we may have to make some more changes, and that could delay things, but I'm expecting a generally positive reaction with minor changes after that, if any. So I'm, I'm hopeful that you'll all see this early or mid in April.
Yeah, I, I think anyone that's been following the process is going to be supportive. I also probably see you're going to have a percentage of, you know, people that want the pothole fixed in front of their house as part of the master.
Yeah.
You know?
Or the speed limit reduced as it happens, yeah.
Changed, or, you know, a new crosswalk somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Which isn't, isn't in the scope of a master plan.
That's all.
Thank you very much. As we noted, I guess not here tonight, her husband not doing well. She's with her husband, I'm sorry. Hope things are well there. So we know the Preservation Act. Can I just ask one question there? Yeah. He didn't mention constructors when I come out and do some more of a presentation, do we know if that happened? There you go, Kathy. I, I knew you'd be part of this meeting, come on.
So for CPA, we do have a meeting at five thirty, March twentieth, to just review a couple of things. And then there's going to be a public review on the twentieth, but at six o'clock.
Okay.
So we go over what it's all about and who that is applied for your monies.
Yeah, because you had a lot of applications, they, they all seem to be kind of on the smaller side.
Yes.
Stuff, yeah.
Yeah, they're just holding their breath waiting for me to put in for the two hundred and forty thousand dollars to upgrade the Lee Athletic Field. For us next year. Well, looking for you, we're working on the open space of our plan, so if that gets approved by the state, we can get a state grant. The state will pay fifty-five percent of the money.
Be good. That'd be positive. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Couple more minutes and we'll get going on the special permit hearing. We, we have to be strict on the time because it is a, a special permit hearing.
We have two more seconds for you guys. We can do that.
Nice thing. What time is this? Seventy-six fifteen. Fourteen. That's what I have.
Forty-five is there.
Yep. We got it?
Almost.
We got a little bit more. We can slowly approach that.
We got fifteen seconds. All right, it's six fifteen.
Okay. Like to open up the special permit hearing for one twenty-five Center Street? So you must have most everything you need, right? We have this. Yeah, that's very, the deck itself. Yes. And that's what you're doing here, building a deck on the side. So you're, it's going to be an upstairs. Oh. Yeah. And it never had egress before? Not one second. Oh. We have a lot of that going on. Family. Yeah. Yeah. Maybe so. It's going to come down here. Yep. I like this one from here. Yeah, that's nice. I like this one. Yeah. Yeah. Peter, you, you see. It's more of a pole. Did he, Peter, get this in his packet?
I tried to send him all the attachments, we had some issues with email, so.
We did not, we didn't want. I don't think.
All dimensions of it. Yeah. Not even sure how to. He needs this one? So can you, are these in? Files book? You can get that.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't know if I.
Yeah, really. Here you go.
I just don't know if I want my email to be reported. Um.
Hey, Brooke, I'll forward what you said to Peter.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't wish you guys are on that. Can you bring my phone up here, or is that against those rules? Your phone.
I'll share my screen as soon as I get that new email.
Oh, that's, yeah, you could. Do that. But that's the wall right there, we're talking. Yep. Why don't, yeah, why don't you share your screen, Brooke?
Yeah, I'm just going to wait for Dan to resend me the email so I can just open that and not the rest of my emails. So I just don't want my emails to be on recording.
Yeah, I did that.
So while we're waiting, east, is this East Center Street?
Yes.
Where is it in relation to anything else that, what, what building is it, can you describe it?
Oh, I'll help. You're coming down Main Street, you take a right at Joe Steiner?
Yeah.
And. Yeah, two houses on the left, it's in front of the old lumberyard.
Okay, okay.
A blue, blue building with a white door.
We're proposing to build a deck?
It's like the admin.
A deck on the side just for egress from our second floor.
And it requires a special permit as a six point one?
Yeah.
Nonconforming lot, okay.
So what it is, it's just a matter of. Downstairs, so. Yeah. It, it's a pre-existing nonconforming. Peter?
Yes.
No, no issues with any neighbors?
No, the seven homes are good over there.
Yeah, they own the whole block. I've got sixteen six, but actually seventeen feet.
We just hold it up to the camera, that's actually my best.
Retaining wall.
Yeah.
Six feet to the left, Peter.
So what? That's all I said, um. There you go. I can go fire up my.
This is the property. Do you see that, Peter?
Yes, thank you. Okay, where's the, where's the deck going to be, on the side?
Yeah, so did you look at it on the side?
Right here is where it's drawn in.
Okay, all right, and there's a driveway out beyond that, that's also part of the lot?
The, the driveway that we're looking at now sort of right to that is actually the driveway that went to the old lumberyard.
So that's not your.
That's the other, other property owned by the seven teams.
Okay, so how far would the deck be from the boundary of your lot when you build it?
There's a retaining wall that was in that picture. He's six feet from the retaining wall.
Well.
Which is actually the property line.
Right here is the wall.
So the deck would be closest appro, uh, closest approach would be six feet from the retaining wall?
Yeah.
And what, what is the requirement in that zone, do we know? For a side yard, fifteen feet or something like that?
That's twenty-five.
Yeah.
It's only an existing nonconforming.
Yeah, it's something like that, it's, well, within, it's already encroaching on the, the side property line.
How close is it already approaching?
It's only twelve feet.
Okay.
Did the neighbor sign? Did the neighbor sign it? Thirteen feet from the house to the property line. And I don't know if that wall is actually on, let's say, two or three feet on your, um, in within the property line? A lot of time when you build those walls, usually on your own property, not somebody else's.
Sometimes they split the middle.
Yeah, so it's thirteen feet from the house. Yeah.
So what, what zone is it in, is it one of the R zones?
It's an industrial zone.
Actually an industrial zone.
Legal notice says CR, but it's not, it's actually industrial.
So and in the industrial zone, the side yard is twenty-five feet, which doesn't make any difference, if you can't meet fifteen, you can't meet twenty-five. So it is nonconforming, and we're under Article Six for a special permit.
Right.
The location is in the CR zone, at one twenty-five Center.
It's industrial.
Right here. Part of the CR zone.
Yeah, that's a good one, split right in there.
Nope.
I thought, I thought all those houses were industrial also.
Here's the CR here. This industrial comes down here. Basically, everything in the mill, Eagle Mill.
Yes.
This is, uh, this is Center Street here. All these houses. This is, this house is.
Yeah.
Here's a, I'll be going up with that.
I see it.
So that's his right there.
Training.
It's definitely industrial.
Yeah. Is it usable in the factory, no?
That's.
Is it usable in the?
That's my bad.
Oh, no, it's all industrial.
I mean, that's the zoning of it, yeah, I understand that.
Basically, you have a pre-existing nonconforming lot, pre-existing nonconforming structure, pre-existing nonconforming frontage in industrial zone, particularly your, particularly all these houses there, you can't even have a house, you know, that's a uses in there. But you're pre-existing nonconforming, your grandfather's buildings.
Yeah, everything is. Okay, so any questions on this, do you think, Peter?
Well, what, what is the section of six point one that we would be granting relief under?
Pre-existing nonconforming.
Yeah, but there's two different sections there.
But I want to know, because there's different varieties that depend on the circumstances. There's some where you're not extending the nonconformity, and there's some where you are, I guess. I'm reading it now as I speak.
Point two C?
No, I'm thinking C.
Six point one C?
Six point two C.
Six point two C, okay. Does it require us to make three findings or one? A, B, and C, or just C?
We are again. I, I think, I think we may need, that is criteria, so we need to, we need to meet that criteria. But then because this is permit, we also have to meet the fines, five findings of a special permit.
It's thirteen point four.
In thirteen four.
But sub- paragraph B says the altered or reconstructed structure will not be in greater nonconformity with yard requirements of this chapter. And this will be in greater nonconformity of the side yard requirements of the chapter, will it not?
Thinking of the yes.
I mean, I don't really like these side yard things anyway, but there it is, you know, I don't know if we have the authority to do this. We did it on the, on the marijuana facility up on Route twenty, remember? Because we said, well, they are building in nonconformity, but the, the new stuff is going to be farther from the road than the old stuff that's already there. But that's not, that's not this case.
You're not reading that as you have A, B, or C? That you, could you?
It doesn't say, it doesn't say or. But you know, yeah, I do, I do read it as all three, and I, I think historically we all have. I, you know, I rely on the marijuana kit facility case where we found, we made a finding under B because even though the new structure was very close to the road, it wasn't as close as the old part of the building. If, if B wasn't relevant now, it wouldn't have been relevant then, and we didn't need to even make a finding under B then, but we did.
You're going to say A, or B, or C, it's collectively A, B, and C.
It's either one, right? Yeah.
Something is going to make this the property, I mean, it's got to have access, there's no access before. So, uh, it, you know, the beat goes on. Yeah. I, I. I don't see where it's changing, it's not liberal glittering. It's all it is, is, I mean, next thing, we'll have to ask the guy to put a wire.
Well, in the apartment. I see, I see it. Peter, I see these three as, the first one tells us for a change in use.
Yeah, that's, this is not a change in use, it's still residential use, so, so we don't need to make a finding under A. I agree with that, Buck.
Yeah. What about, what about six point four? Unsafe structures? With a, no means of second egress on the second. I mean, we've, we've always been able to do this, just where the heck did we do it? You know?
Another question here, Paulson, this is a duplex today.
Yeah.
Okay, and why? Who, who said you need a secondary means of egress? The building department?
Yes.
Okay.
But that is normal anyhow.
No, I get it.
No.
But it's a duplex today.
Yeah, that's mine.
Okay, just access on the second floor, you're not creating a third unit.
No, no.
Okay.
It's the two units, first.
It's going to be two units when you're done.
It's already been done, it's been rented out in the past, new owner bought the place.
Right.
And he wants a second egress for safety.
Right.
And, oh, okay.
No, there's no problem with having a duplex. Again, it's pre-existing nonconforming, but some people will do this to put a third unit in.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not that. So, Peter? Can, can every, can we look at? You can look, there's the old picture. Six point one. There, we had a few meters there.
Two meters there.
Six point one, C three. I believe that gives us the authority.
We're just looking for legalities.
Well, can you just repeat which section it is?
Six, one, C, three. Any alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a one-family or two-family structure? Which will increase the existing non-conformity by further encroaching on required yard requirements or further increasing the maximum. Building coverage or building height as specified in table of dimensions. May be authorized by special permit from the planning board upon a finding that such alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change. Shall not be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming, forming structure to the neighborhood.
I think you got it, Buck.
That one worked?
Yeah.
That's the one. I knew there was one in here that we did that, so.
Don't worry, I started.
Okay, so um. Peter, you think um, you're comfortable with this one?
Yes. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that having a deck is gonna bother anybody. From what I can tell, at least a little bit I know about it. And it might improve egress if there's a fire or something. Might let people get out faster, so I, I'm all in favor. And it's an industrial area. I don't know why we have a twenty five foot side yard in an industrial area. It's crazy. They, they should be, it should be like three feet.
Yeah. The, the, yeah, I've seen that in many towns, so.
And what do you think?
I'll second the point.
Yeah, we gotta go through a lot here. Okay. Conrad, you, you okay, or? Okay, so we're gonna start off with the site plan itself. Still, um, you want, you want me to? Read a motion and?
I want, I want to delegate to Conrad or Dave. Or any.
There we go. So we need first the, the way strict site plan requirement is, right, then a small site plan submission. Correct?
Find that this, the site plan submission is sufficient for review and then approve the site plan.
Correct. So we need first the, the site plan is. Sufficient as a minor site plan and. Accepted for review. I'll make that motion since you already said it all. There you go. Any second on that? I'll second the point. Okay, owner on the room, Dan, hi. Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Donovan, hi. Um, so the. Site plan is submitted now to this special permit, right?
You have to approve the site plan first, I think.
Yes, thank you.
A motion to approve the, the site plan.
There we go. Dave motions, second, second. Any further? Dan, hi. Conrad?
Hi.
Dave? Peter?
Hi.
Uh, Donovan, hi. Okay, site plan is accepted um, onto the special permit. Um, five findings, right, Peter?
Well, um. I think you ought to start with. Six point one, C, three. And make those findings and then. If you want to keep going in the traditional thirteen point four, we can do that too, but. I think you need to have. An motion that cites to. Section six point one, C three, and says that. The planning, the planning board finds. That the alteration reconc- the, the extension or structural change here. Will not be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. That's the main criterion.
I'd like to second that motion. Okay.
Did I make it? Am I recorded as making the motion? I haven't seen the plan, so I'm, I'm reluctant to make the motion. I'm voting yes, but I haven't seen the plan. Somebody else.
Okay, any further discussion? Dan? Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Uh, Donovan, hi. I think being a special permit, we do have to do the five findings.
Okay. Are you ready to roll on this? Last time we did this, you had, you had it all in front of you.
Yeah.
I like, I like the more complex one. Was it thirteen point four?
Thirteen four.
It's late in the section. It's like part E or something like that. More even later. I, paragraph I.
Mandatory findings.
So I think the first one is, the first one is in conflict with six point one. We can't. Find that the structure is in compliance with side yard requirements, but you can. Make a finding that it's in harmony with general intent and purpose.
Yeah, okay, so under I mandatory, mandatory findings, or granting a special permit with or without conditions. Special permit granting authority shall find that the proposed structure or use satisfies all the following standards. Make a motion for one, that the structure and the use is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this chapter and in harmony with its general. Intent and purpose. Structure is an existing non-conforming residential structure. In an industrial zone, it's existed there for decades. And the building department is requiring that a. Um, adequate fire escape is provided for the second floor. So. You're doing so.
What kind of reason?
As general intent is, is satisfied.
One, all, all in favor of that? Dan?
Hi.
Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Uh, Donovan, hi. Number two.
Make a motion that under two, the structure and or use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location. Again, this is a fire escape. For a secondary means of egress coming off the second floor. So it is a, it is essential for public safety and the building code. Is desirable to the public convenience, but more importantly, the public, so the tenants that are could be occupying this uh. The structure on the second floor. So.
Dan?
Would work.
Do I second? Do, do we really second on these? Do you think, Peter?
Do we what? I'm sorry, Buck, ask again, please.
Do you have second on all these, or do, does the board just vote as?
I think you need a motion and second on every one of them. To make a.
Second.
He's got it.
Dan's got it. Dave had it for the first one. Okay. Any further discussion? Dan, did you have something on that?
Well, Conrad had mentioned, you know, as long as it wasn't gonna go be another, uh, like a third floor or another apartment. Kind of, but not really, because that's restricted anyway. Okay. That was it. Um, yeah, we're looking at just what it is. Gotcha.
Yes. So, uh, Dan? Hi. Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Uh, Donovan, hi. Number three.
Make a motion that the structure and or use will not be detrimental to the taste of uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood. Again, this is a pre-existing structure, pre-existing residential use. Uh, in the industrial zone, uh, there's no change to the use, there's no expansion of the use. And this proposed deck is essential, but it's also not detrimental to the taste of uses. To the character of the neighborhood. We did have a letter come in. Was concerned about the foundation. It was adequately addressed, but it's not gonna impact the. Uh, retaining wall on the left side of the residence.
Second?
I'll second.
Dave seconds?
Buck, just for discussion, um, I think it's important for me to note that the adjacent property that's close to this deck. Is a driveway. It's not gonna be crowding another building. So I think that's another thing, another point for it here.
Okay. We noted, uh, Dan?
Hi.
Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Uh, Donovan, hi. Number four.
Make a motion that there will be, that there will not be undue traffic congestion or undue impairment pedestrian safety. Kind of obvious, it's not.
Yep.
There's no, no impact to go either roles.
There a second?
I'll second.
Dave seconds? Any further? Hearing none. Dan?
Hi.
Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Uh, Donovan, hi. Number five.
Make a motion that the structure and or use will not control any public water drainage or sewage system. Or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use or any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of town. Will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting public health, safety, and general welfare. Since there's no utility connections. Or requirements for public water drainage or any other useful uh. Utilities that uh. There is no effect.
Okay, is there a second? Dan, got that one. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dan, hi. Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Uh, Donovan, hi. This special permit, there is a, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we need a file motion to approve the special permit under six point one and without conditions.
Okay. Yes, that, all right.
It's a nice motion.
That's a good one. Nice short one. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
Hi.
Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Uh, Donovan, hi. So anyway, like I was saying, you have your special permit. You have, there are sixty days, right, Brooke?
Twenty days for, yeah. It'll be from when it's posted.
Yeah. If anybody objects.
After it's posted with the town clerk.
Send it with your kid. I mean, you could go ahead, but that be at your own.
No, I'm not gonna go ahead, go ahead, Simon, you know, so.
Yeah, I hear ya. Don't agree anymore.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, appreciate it. So thanks for that.
I'd like to have the board discuss how to make this a little shorter for the minor site plan amendment. I don't care if we have a new paragraph, that has everything, well, the site plans are easy. It's the special permit that. I mean, I. I just can't believe that we made this non-admirable.
It's, it is a big stuff, because the problem is a, a special permit for a. Little six foot deck is the same as if a guy had a. Three-story building.
Well, first of all, we get it's a minor. Well, and then we go for the next.
But the findings are still the same. Well, they're still gonna be the same. I, I understand. We made it through it. Um, moving on, we have. Forty-three Hart Street, Greylock Credit Union. Before we wrote the. I see we have a whole bunch. Chris Ben, hi, and I, I hope everyone took his advice and took a ride through there and see what it looks like now. And if you can remember what it looked like before. In my opinion, it's a great improvement. It feels better going through there. Um, the curb that was there was always very awkward. Without losing the right rear tire, it pushed the traffic closer to the intersection. And just seemed to, um. Be more of a hindrance to the area than, than help. Uh, what they have now with the. Seems very good. Don't. It's a tough common use area anyway. I, I don't see it as a problem. I'd like to do an amendment on this site plan.
I'm with you, but another thing, uh, you know, we realize there's a sidewalk on the other side of Adam's bank that goes from the parking lot. You come to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's very simple. I think if you lock it, we don't observe. Uh, it may be at the very most, the market in the parking lot to get most people to exit. Through a big wide area over the gas station. That the exit is, that's not there. I, I realize there, yeah, some, some have begun to, it's quite less crap as we help.
I would agree. I would almost consider moving the entryway, uh, in between Adam and Greylock. Uh, to make that safe for the public, and then having that one access. You can even think about moving that sidewalk up that's near Park Square. Further up towards Greylock, where there's a crosswalk right there. If you close the entryway, uh, then you have a control of how it flows. It's kind of hard. Stop.
I can't hear anything.
I can't hear.
We can't, we, we, we can't hear.
You guys should speak up. It should. Still going. Can you guys hear me if I speak right now?
Yes, I, I can hear you, Brooke. Unfortunately, I, I had missed, uh, what the last two gentlemen were referencing. Um, cut out completely, or it was not loud enough, and I've got my volume all the way up.
It's definitely.
Uh, I was saying that, did you hear me with the opening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I did hear you.
Okay, right, and then all I was saying was, uh, at the last meeting, you know, Ed brought up the sidewalk. And Dave just hit upon the sidewalk on the other side of Adam's community that kind of goes full length. Every time President, being here my entire life, I've looked at that parking lot, and I don't like where that entrance is between Greylock. And Adams right now. It's unsafe for our residents. And I would actually like to see that entryway, uh, just sidewalk, and then make everyone come in. Either, uh, for you guys to see you through your entryway, or on the other side for Sanoco and Adams are.
So no drive-through?
No, no.
It would still have the.
Exit from a drive-through.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna be able to come.
Oh. I don't think you can make that turn.
I, I don't, I don't know.
I don't think you can make that turn, although.
If it's, if you lock it off, you have a nice little.
And no one would be exiting. But that's, that's crazy. That's crazy.
I wouldn't, let's not get into that whole redesign. Let's look at what's before us.
So you folks know, we have some full-size plans of current, what it looks like now, what you all asked last time on the table right there. Uh, they're just full-size, so I didn't copy them into your.
It's a mess, but.
Buck, can I, uh, can I offer a comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, so I think the existing arrangement is better than the old arrangement, and I think it's fine. At the standard that is established in that area. Um, I, I consider two sort of extreme cases. One. Where the customer comes around the back of the building and then tries to wanna shoot out into the. Traffic that's going by in or out of the Walgreens parking lot, but. That is well-controlled because there's a, still a pole there with a bollard, and the person coming around the back of the building. Has to make a full left turn ninety degrees before they can think about entering that stream of traffic. Ten or fifteen feet later. And the bank has placed a very wide. White stripe there, the whole length of the building that says stop, so. I just don't see that it's. In any way worse or more risky than half a dozen other things in that general parking area, which is kind of a mess generally. Especially over by the Sanoco. The other extreme case is up where, at the, up at the front, where the customer. The other extreme case is up where, up at the front, where the customer comes out of the teller window with their car and they have to turn right. And I'm a little more concerned about that one because I think there's more risk there, not of encountering in an accident with somebody passing by in the driveway, but if somebody turning right off Park Street and coming in and, you know, the person pulls out of the bank doesn't really see the car coming off Park Street and the person coming off Park Street maybe doesn't see the person pulling out of the bank. I still think the risk is very small. And at any case, it's no worse than it was before with that burn back twenty feet farther back. It's just exactly the same situation as far as I can see. So having considered both of those, what I consider extreme cases, I think in both cases, the risk is small and reasonable, and I think they've done a reasonably good job and they should get approval.
Yeah, and just so you know, Peter, the plans that we've been presented with tonight have all that listed out on them that was lacking last time.
Good.
Location of the bollard, location of the pole, all the striping that's on the, is on these plans.
We asked for an as-built drawing, and that's what we got, I guess, huh?
It is. Yep.
Good. Thank you.
Any, anyone other discussion on the board?
Yeah.
Okay, Conrad.
When we met last time, the engineers, the civil folks, we're gonna take a look at a possibility running that egress driveway between those two bollards that have fifteen foot separation between them. Those treffer on the back came out of it, perpendicular to the common driveway. Basically, when you look at the graying plan that you guys provided, it was like point nine foot rise in elevation over a fourteen foot run, so roughly six percent slope would come out of that driveway. Did you guys look at that at all?
Um, no, sir, we did not because we don't have rights to ingress, egress, or regress at that location, but I know where you are looking at, and that would only serve as a, I like to call it a pressure relief valve, where it's somebody who goes around the building and either two scenarios happen. One, they have no interest in banking and they thought it was the way out, but there is somebody blocking the way. Or two, it is a banking customer that is coming around the corner and sees that there are already people at the teller windows and decide they do not want to wait. But again, we don't have any rights at that section of the site.
That's good. I understand that. There's a legal issue there with easement that would make sense. From a physical standpoint, it gives you a, gives you that bypass lane escape. That's people who weren't gonna go to the drive-through could go upstream, again, perpendicular to the common driveway. It just makes better sense, but so we'll have to discount that. As you suggested, I went down to that location four times over the last two weeks watching the traffic movements, watching pedestrian movements. On average, I was watching about four drive-through approaches. We had about two to three bypass lane departures. Of the four times I was down there, that's kind of what it averaged. Every bypass person, every bypass vehicular movement always came out at a forty-five degree angle, every one of them. And what was really odd about it, I'd never seen this before, but there was three times of the four times I was there, a car or pickup truck came out at a forty-five degree angle, came out into the common driveway, he did a three-point turn into a hundred eighty degree turn back to the Walgreens. I'd never seen that before, but that's what they were doing.
So strange. It would have been easier just to go right up to Park Street and make a right and cut in the next curb cut down the road. I mean, it's
Again, that's just what they were doing. The only, the four times there, every time I was there, there was pedestrians walking from the sidewalk, coming down the common driveway, walking down the Walgreens, walking down to the Third Street Park. It just worked. And this is late January and this is February, when it was kind of nice, people were walking. During the warm weather, people are walking, I think it's Pike Ninety, she walks down there all the time. There is vehicular and pedestrian activity walking along parallel to your sideline there. And if you have people coming out at a forty-five degree angle, there's gonna be that interaction with the pedestrian and vehicular activity. Again, just an observation.
Hey, Conrad? Conrad, can I just interrupt on that? I think as a person who hasn't lived in Lee all my life, only twelve years, I want to tell you that the entrances along that stretch of Park Street are very confusing about what leads to which and which is, you know, blocked off in the back. And if you're headed for Walgreens and you don't know it really well, and you're coming down the hill from the west, it's quite easy, I think, to make the wrong turn into the bank parking lot and then have to do that reverse direction after you escape from the bank parking lot. I can well see how a lot of people would need to do that.
Okay, just a couple of questions. Option one, so you're proposing option one, it's gonna be leaving a semi-eight foot wide unrestricted curb cut for the drive-through and bypass departure. And again, everybody's gonna come out at forty-five degree. There's just, there's no way getting around that. Coming out at forty-five degree. Your option two was to extend the concrete curb to fifteen feet and then you, that you reasoned cut back down to, and then you're gonna be adding what looks like a forty-eight foot long mountable concrete curb. What was the mountable concrete curb replacement? What is that supposed to accomplish at this point? Is it to stop egress traffic? Is it to slow egress traffic? Or is it to provide stormwater retention? Because now it's all wide open and obviously with the slopes tall, all the water from your side, that side probably will drain out of the common driveway where the curbing before it did, it stayed on, stayed on site and corrected the back.
No, it went to the end.
All the way to the end.
You think?
Oh, yeah. No.
Okay.
No, their spotways show that the drive-through is higher than the back
Okay.
that corner of the property. So again, it's what's the, what's the purpose?
The purpose of the the purpose of the mountable curb is to dissuade drivers from driving over it, but they can physically drive over it. It's a very common civil engineer detail that I've seen in a number of projects, and we've used it successfully to curtail traffic for the drive-up and traffic that wants to just use a bypass. We were hoping that that option would be much more appreciated because, as you had mentioned, Conrad, that it helps navigate in direct water, stormwater. But also, it's a visual barrier less of a physical barrier than a six-inch tall curb.
Yeah.
But in both scenarios, we were showing the extension of the burn because, as you can see from the as-built, we removed too much as compared to the limits of our rights for the ingress and egress.
Well, in my opinion, from the absent having the full curb along the way, the way it was for the last seventeen years, and it did protect pedestrian people coming down that way. Yes, knowing that can't get the backs opened up because of easement constraint, I understand that. I guess, I would I don't like it, but I would go along with the the raised median. You know, the raised curb there as a way of at least slowing down the people departing that way and giving some pedestrian protection when they're walking down that way. I'm only one vote, so I guess whatever, that's the board's. Again, I've got a lot of history there. I see what the people do there, both with cars, trucks, and with pedestrians.
That's their option two.
What are the
I would go with option two, Buck.
Okay. One of the things I would like, one of the things I'd like to mention, Conrad, is that was never a sidewalk. I know that pedestrians did use it as a sidewalk, but it was never intended to be a sidewalk. It's not ADA accessible, it's not wide enough. It's too tall. It has a pretty considerable slope. The original burn before it was removed is what I'm speaking of. So we didn't have any intention of putting a sidewalk back in place of where the burn was. The other thing I wanted to ask was, you had mentioned that you are for option two, but you refer to it as the concrete curb. Do you, for option two with the mountable curb, is that what you're referring to?
Your option two is a mountable curb. Yeah, and the raised curb that was there before, that was never used as a sidewalk. All at once, there's a barrier to keep cars coming out at a forty-five degree angle when pedestrians will walk into the back. And during the summer especially, there's a lot of people walk back and forth between there. We really can't rely on the sidewalk on the other side of the avenue. Again, I'm one vote, I'm just I was concerned about the pedestrian and the vehicular activity. Seventy feet wide, cars coming out at forty-five degree. That was my concern.
Thank you, Conrad.
All set? All right. I think, I mean, we got two options on here. Let's work backwards on this. I'd like to entertain a motion for the option two with the mountable curb to be proposed.
And what's option one going to be? No curb?
As is, as the
As built.
As built.
As built or extended to fifteen foot to the easement line?
As built in this
Stand right now.
As it stands right now.
No, they're adding fifteen feet. Their option one is adding fifteen feet, so it goes to the easement line, the diamond line there. So you're adding fifteen feet of concrete curb to the easement line. That's what they're offering.
I'm sorry, I'm confused about what option one is and what option two is and what a mountable curb is. I don't have the papers.
May I share my screen? Is that possible?
I think, yeah, I think you'll be able to, if you just give it a try.
Tonight, you can. If you could go over it with us and maybe give us how it is right now.
Okay.
I'm gonna make you the host, Crispin, but before you leave, you can
Ms. Healy, you shouldn't have to. Let me just share my screen. Oh, disable share.
Yeah.
Right. You do have to make me host.
Yes, and then before you leave, you could just send it back to me, so that way the meeting doesn't end.
Please remind me so I don't hang up and everybody goes, the meeting's over, not joking. Let's see here if I can get this to work. Can you all see the as-built survey?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. So
Can you zoom a little bit, Crispin?
I am. Is it getting any better?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right there.
Okay, so this dash line is the easement line as it comes in and meets our property line on the eastern edge of the site. You can see down here where parts of the existing burn still remain where we've located the bollards, the utility pole, and a manhole. As you can see here, we missed our target by approximately fifteen feet. So we do have an option one and option two extending that curb all the way to the easement line. And then the rest of it is asphalt pavement, aside from a concrete pad that we have at the windows, so that when idling cars during the summertime are not deforming asphalt. Concrete's better at maintaining its shape. So that is the existing as-built. Mr. Bloom, does that help?
Yes, so I see the as-built, and option one is to extend the bollard.
Yes, let me see if I can
Fifteen more feet.
Let me see if I can pull that up. Can you see my screen with some markings on it?
I can see a a diagram, a building diagram.
Changed yet.
It hasn't changed yet, Crispin.
Okay, give me one second. Let me see if I can figure out how to adjust this back. I'm gonna do the stop, share, and then try to share again. Thank you for letting me know. You should be able to see it.
Okay, I see it now.
Okay. So as you can see down here, both option one and option two, when I scrolled to option two, show the burn, the curbing of the burn extended to the easement line. There is the option of getting rid of the stop bar, which is that wide bar that was mentioned by the Mr. Chairman, and doing different type of line striping to be a little bit more eye-catching. And I was thinking doing a cross hatch all the way across with a boundary line as well, omitting one of the turn arrows. And then either writing yield or caution or stop within that hatch pattern. And then do not enter on the opposite side, which is not technically on our property, but if the board would be willing, we could also do that as well, so there is no intersecting traffic trying to get into Graylock's site. So that is option one. Any questions?
What is the curb like? Is this a mountable or a standard curb?
No, this is not the mountable curb option.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'll show the mountable curb option and then field questions on that one. Here is option two. And I've added images to understand what a mountable curb is. The image down here bordered in green is actually a civil detail on how that is constructed. And then the image up here relates to, and let me zoom in so maybe you can get a better view. Sorry, this is a little grainy. What a demountable curb looks like. So it is a curb, but instead of having a tall six-inch shoulder, it actually is at a slope. Now, sometimes in some urban areas, they do offer these so that police vehicles and emergency vehicles can make quick U-turns or turnarounds in case of emergencies. But in option two, we are also extending the curb again to extend to meet the easement line. And then we're adding an additional length to the end of the concrete apron that we already have in place of the, of the mountable curb represented here. We can even go in and paint the angled portions of the curb yellow to make it stand out even more. It will be constructed out of concrete. And then on the end here, we have multiple options for line painting. We can do a stop bar with a stop. We could do that cross hatch pattern with the paint stripe border. We can do the do not enters kind of dealer's choice on that one. But just anything to catch the motorists' eyes as they are entering into that right-of-way. Any questions on either option one or option two?
Yes, I do, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
It seems like your discovery that your right-of-way is a problem for you suggests that you might want to put something more down there than you already have, even if the board doesn't ask you to do that. Is it, is it your preference to extend some sort of a structure there to the point where the right-of-way intersects your property? Maybe you can't answer that, Crispin. Maybe the bank people need to answer that.
Well, no, Mr. Bloom, I'd like to answer it. I'm just having difficulty following your question. Can you please rephrase it for me?
Yeah, so under both options, you are proposing to extend some structure generally northward about fifteen feet to the point where the right-of-way intersects the property line. Is that right?
Yes. Yes, we want to respect the easement line, and it was not our intention to be disrespectful of that.
Okay, so if I said I'd prefer that they do nothing, that would not comport with your preference at this point, right? You want to do something about that problem at least, right?
Well, if you through your experience of driving through the drive-up, feel it is a safer condition to leave it as it is today, obviously, it'd be up to the board to make that decision on whether that's an acceptable condition to leave. Obviously, we are working in good faith. We got the as-built, we got these options created. And we would like to do right by the Town of Lee and the planning board. But if the planning board says, hey, how it is today is perfect, don't change it, we will, we will stand down and we will not change it. We'll leave it as is.
Okay. That's, I think that's what I prefer, Mr. Chairman. I think, I appreciate very much the work that they put in since the last meeting. These are clever and thoughtful modifications. work that they put in since the last meeting, these are clever and thoughtful modifications, but I basically think they're unnecessary unless somehow they're gonna be incurring some legal liability from the adjacent property for violating a right-of-way ease, uh, uh, limit. So I guess I'm in favor of saying leave them, leave it the way it is.
Is that a motion?
Okay, I move that we approve the as-built design submitted. Um. As submitted.
Which one?
Not, not option one, not option two, just the as-built design.
Yeah, as-built.
The as-built, yeah.
Understood.
Hey, is there a second? All second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Dan? Hi, Conrad?
No.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi. Okay. So it shall be amended. Just like, there's one slight point. Okay, Chrisman, have you relinquished host?
Let me do that right now, um.
Thank you.
You know, Ms. Healy, if you could walk me through how to do that, so I don't make an accidental blunder. I would appreciate the distance.
If you hover over the courtroom, the town of Lee, and you'll see the little three dots in the top right corner. So our picture.
Right there, yep.
Okay.
Yeah. And then if you hit that and say, um, I think it's make host.
Not there anymore.
Yeah, I don't see it. The three dots, Ms. Healy, I don't see those.
So, do you see like yourself as a large image and then on the top you see a bunch? So hover over the town of Leah courtroom, us in the courtroom.
And click on make host.
Yes, you'll see a mute, perfect, thank you.
Got it, thank you so much for your assistance, Ms. Healy.
No worries, thank you.
I know you have, we're out there.
They're out there.
Okay. Thank you folks, thank you, and um. I hope it works, if, if we see an issue down there, I bet we'll be talking. So.
Give me a call.
Hey, I was in the bank, I was in the bank the other day and the, the tellers were squinting at the sun in the late afternoon, can you give them some blinds so they don't have to be blinded? It looks like, it looks like a terrarium in there.
We're, we're working on it, thank you.
All right, good.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone.
Now open sign staying up, Gordon jumped you on that one last time.
Uh, we get, we get thirty days from what I understand, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna stay out at this time, thank you.
I gotta say, the place looks great.
Thank you. We appreciate you, thank you.
Okay, next up. Marijuana bylaw. So as everyone knows on the board, the select board has sent a letter and they are looking for us to the marijuana bylaw, which is section one ninety-nine. Nine eleven. Ninety-nine nine eleven. And then you go to section D. Talks about, number one talks about retail, which we're not touching. Our section two talks about total number of non-retail marijuana establishments shall not exceed fourteen. Um, just to give some background, Peter, were you, you were around on this one, right?
No, that was my off year.
That was your off year, so anyway. Um, why the board came up with fourteen? If you go further um. Licenses for marijuana establishments, I believe there's seven or eight different style licenses. Cultivating, this crap cultivating, the testing, um, there's a whole list of them. We have in here. Definitely, it's in the definitions, yep. Definitions, craft marijuana co-op, testing. All of that.
Transporting.
Transportation, okay, so when you add those up, considering that one business might hold multiple licenses to, you know, have the, the basic, um competition of commerce, um, fourteen seemed to be like a, it was a arbitrary number, um, since then we've had the grow facilities because of the odor have been problematic and the select board is, and also we've lost the host, um, the community host agreement has been restructured, so there's not as much benefit to the town without that, they still pay all the taxes of the business, they have another tax on top of their, of any other business that we still get the money from.
Just three percent?
Yeah. But they do not, the host agreements are gonna go away. So they felt, I believe, I wish one of them were here.
Sean is.
Oh, Sean, am I, just correct me if I'm speaking inappropriate here, but because there's not as much benefit to us now and some problems with the growth facilities with the odor, they're looking to restrict it back to three. Now, we're tasked with putting, we could put an amendment to the uh, the town meeting and just say three and let the townspeople vote on it. Let it go. Or we could, or we could really break it down and get all sorts of complicated with between cultivation and all the different licenses, we could break it down to what company licenses they're gonna allow.
So fourteen down to three.
Yep.
That's not inclusive of the two.
Retail.
So it's two retail and then there's three, and these are fourteen dollars. But that's gonna be reduced to three dollars.
Yep, correct.
And do we have those three dollars filled out?
They are filled.
They are filled?
Yeah.
So it's really.
Buck, can I, can I speak? Uh, last time we talked about this, Gordon was with us and he said that he was gonna talk to the enforcement office about why we can't solve the pending smell problem at the growth facility on Route one oh two through enforcement actions, and I haven't heard a word back on that. But my sense of it is, maybe you have. Uh, but my sense of this is that there's only one way that I could think that this proposal would make sense, and that is that it's impossible to have any marijuana facilities that ever could be desirable in town and, you know, not stink up the neighborhood. And is that where we are, so that we've made a terrible mistake in allowing them in at all, and we're now trying to minimize the harm from this essentially noxious enterprise that creates more harm than good, or is it a case where, and I think I'm leaning this way, subject to more evidence, but uh, I think it's a case where these marijuana enterprises are heavily regulated businesses, but they are businesses. They do pay property taxes, they do have employees, and I think they even pay an extra tax because they're in the marijuana business. And some of that money goes to the state and some of that money goes to the town. So, and let, if we can solve the smell problem, I think they are probably very desirable businesses from a commercial point of view. So before I would vote in favor of anything like, and I, I want to say also I don't have any particular attachment to fourteen. I was, they said I wasn't on the board and I didn't participate in the discussions. But to change from fourteen to three indicates that we've learned a very severe lesson that we've been warned by this stuff and we don't think it can be fixed. And uh, let's minimize the harm, seems to be the strategy of that amendment. And I just, I, I, I don't know what the science is, whether these places can be made less noxious and, uh. And it's just a case of the one place that we have experience with has not done everything that they should. Or maybe it's a case where it's all gonna stink and drive neighbors crazy and smell like a skunk. And we'll never, you know, we'll never be glad we have any of these businesses. In which case I could be brought around to three, but right now I'm not there yet.
Um, the, the only information I've gotten, we there's the whole uh, Cannabis Control Commission, CCC. And they have their regulations and we've read through them a lot when we were doing the bylaw. And that's why we did put the odor bylaw in there, it was well within, uh, Gordon referenced that because of their changes, that that's no longer, um, possible. Um, I got the, the PowerPoint that they presented about their changes, most of it, in fact, it all had to do with the community host agreement, there is one section that referenced other regulations and they can't be more restrictive than any other business. Now I see that as you talk about smell, we, okay, we have odor in two different places. And then a third, if you go into our regular zoning, um. That you can't have it, we've had instances, Leeline, a few years ago, I don't know if anyone remembers. They were using a product in their pelletizing machine that stank up the whole town. Um, they were approached, they changed it. So there is, there is enforcement, there's ways to fix it.
And then, and then the marijuana enforcement provisions are particularly powerful. Then, if they don't fix it after being asked to fix it, the town can just order them to close down. Which, uh, I don't think we can do generally, I mean, I think we'd have to go to a court at least, uh, normally. So I just, I just feel like we need, before we take any action on this, I need to hear from the enforcement office.
Well, I think we have a public hearing coming up and, um. Do we really want to do anything with it, or do we let, let their proposal go to town meeting of three?
Well.
Do you think?
Go ahead, Dave, yeah.
Do you think that, when we, the last meeting, you talked about going to court, getting an injunction? Uh, you could take the legal route and see if we can get any satisfaction with that before we.
It's an expert question as to how the best, what the best way is to enforce it, I think there are a lot of tools available. Some of them involve going to court, some of them I think don't. But that's not, you can decide, that's for the enforcement officer to pick which of his tools does he want to use, and right now the answer is none, apparently.
Well, also the, the selectmen don't want to um. Invite any more businesses because they don't have the community host agreement, is there, is the argument also?
I know, I, I bet, I, I can see why people are disappointed in that, but since I wasn't part of the negotiations and originally I, I don't quite the sense of betrayal, I, I think the issue is without that agreement, without that, that extra payoff that we were expecting are these businesses still desirable businesses in the league or not? And, you know, I, they, they contribute more than, than other businesses, more than bars and, 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 uh, and liquor stores from what I can tell. Uh, and nobody's proposing to get rid of the liquor stores. So I just, I, I don't think the question is whether we're getting less than we expected, I think the question is are we getting enough to want to keep them around and give them as much space as we originally thought we wanted to?
Not keeping them around, regulating everyone anymore.
I couldn't hear you, Conrad, say it louder.
I don't know.
Oh, true, not, not the way it is, we're not regulating what's there now, we're trying to regulate not doing anymore in the future.
Yeah, they're saying, I think they're saying this is it, what we got now is all we want, right?
Yeah. Sean, any, um.
Hello.
Hi there.
I got a new dog that I'm trying to wrangle, I hope he's not a pain right now, but he might bark, anyway. Um, no, I think I was listening in before and I think uh, the his, like everything that Buck said, the history and the characterization makes sense and, um. From my perspective, the way that we're presenting it is to essentially say do you want to leave it kind of the way that it is, uh, uh, the way that it is really, or do you want to, uh, keep it to the three, and I think that, that's the idea of the hearing and, and eventually to see what the people say and whether or not we take that to town meeting for the people to decide, either leave it the way that it is, or let's cut it off, that's, that's how I see how it's written so far, so.
Sean, Sean, I agree, that's the issue, but, um, what if we pass this amendment, that doesn't help in any way what's going on on Route one oh two with the existing facility, right?
Yeah, I think it just prevents, uh, anything further, but I think that it also might send an, a message to the industry a little bit that they need to fix this problem, well, I think the hearing does that alone anyway, but I think that's the real heart of the issue, is how does the industry fix this issue of the smell, because it's not just Lee, it's, it's, it's all, you go to any of these facilities and you can smell them in the neighborhood. So that's kind of the problem.
I really think we need to fix what's broken before we reduce the numbers. Uh, we have a problem, uh, I've heard stories of another town northeast had a similar problem. And the location was in New Hampshire, uh, they put a second filtering system in besides the carbon filters that exist now and supposedly it take, it took care of the problem. Uh, before we reduce numbers, because it does bring jobs to town, but we've got to deal with the smell. Uh. Maybe we need to bring the owners in and between both boards, talk to them. See what they have to offer to rectify the problem.
You have, haven't you, Sean?
Yeah, so I've gone to the facility and they've they have retrofitted, uh, carbon filters that just don't seem to quite do the trick, I think that there was some improvement, but ultimately it, I hear from uh, some of the businesses who are next door and it's in the morning and the, in the evening, so I think that's the root of the issue, so whether or not this bylaw fixes it, obviously I don't think it does, but, um. What the bylaw I think would allow the people to do is whether or not to say, do we want to continue to allow these sorts of things to go on in town, or do we want to stop that from happening, so I think that's the idea behind the change, um. Beyond that, we kind of have to go a different route to actually fix the issue uh, that this facility is causing, but I don't know that that's possible.
Sean, have you, have you taken any enforcement action against that facility?
Uh, other than um. Amending the host community agreement, we, we, we essentially gave them all the money back so that they could you know, do what they need to do, spend it in that, in that fashion.
So we gave them our money to do, to fix it?
It was their money that they paid the town, yep. And that's, again, a, a lot of people think, oh, we just gave them all the tax, well, we didn't give them all the tax money back, this is the host community agreement and, uh. Those are essentially, we're, we're I, I would say my opinion on that is that I think we're just gonna do away with them eventually in the long run. Or, you know, we, or just not do away with them, but the focus will be agreed upon with the owners and it will be all that public safety stuff that we are, have in place um, to continue to fund, you know, and there might be more programs that we can, uh, negotiate with them to fund as well, so. I see that being, becoming the host community agreements.
But you never went to them and said, you're violating the bylaw, you have to comply, that never happened, right?
Not, not formally.
Okay. All right, well, you know, if, if, if you're right, Sean, I think what you're saying is this kind of place can't be fixed uh, to make it work, you know, so that it doesn't stink. And if that's so, then I think what you propose makes sense. And if that's so, then I think what you propose makes sense. But I'm not convinced on the facts yet.
Well, even Pittsfield had a problem. Have they straightened out their problem?
I don't know.
Anybody know?
Don't know.
Well, as I say, I just don't think the town should have to live with the problem. Uh, the only time it smells is during harvest. So I realize they got harvest, but the answer is not to limit the numbers and live with the existing problem. We got to solve what the problem is and then decide on numbers.
That's, that's what I think. You know, you're you're limiting, you're taking an industry and you're saying, nope, you're done. That's it. No more. And it's just, I don't think it's fair for the industry. When it does, for the most part, it's a that one facility with this smell is an impact. The rest of them are I I gotta say, it's kind of a positive impact. They, Canada does, they're, they do a lot within our community.
That's true.
But did they, it is. I understand that, but they, you know, at the other one, they have, I believe they have an edible um, cork and hars. That little place, they have, they have a license, I think, for consumables.
Yeah, but they're not gonna produce the crop of this place. Do we have anything in town that equals this place down on itself for production?
Take open, but there's, there's three licenses, but is that the only one that's functioning right now?
As a grow facility?
As a grow, you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know that location, I know.
What was the question again?
Which, what are the other two facilities, Sean, in town? Sweetgrass has a license, right?
They have, they, so they have two. They have a retail and they have a manufacturing.
Okay, so who, that's the other manufacturing?
Uh, um, the one oh two grow facility. They have two, they have two as well.
Gotcha. I see. Okay. No, no, it's three, it's three.
So, if the 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 issue is the smell and there's what, two facilities that that have that
manufacturing license?
Why doesn't the town look at potentially limiting those types of facility versus the retail, which?
Well, because even from what the selectmen are telling us, even limiting their number to any, you can't solve the problem. I think it's what I'm I'm hearing from them, but I I don't, I don't agree. Because the we have in our bylaw that they they can't re-rend either situation within thirty days, they're to stop operation. It's in there, right? And that has not been presented yet.
Well, maybe we should talk before it's launched and see which way does you want to use the court injunction on, option, Sean?
Sorry, I missed that last question, but just a clarification from the licenses, the man, so far the manufacturing doesn't seem to cause a smell issue. So it's just the one, the cultivation. I I I kind of, I might have heard it wrong, but the Sweetgrass's manufacturing, they're really just gonna take, you know, flower cannabis and turn it into the edibles and the oils and that stuff, the salves and all that. So, and that doesn't seem to be a problem, so it's just the one oh two. But was there a question?
Well, I was, have, have we ever threatened them with the rectify their situation within thirty days or cease operation?
Have we threatened them? I don't, I don't think so. Not that I'm aware.
I could say not threatening, but make them aware.
Sure, yeah. Um, I don't, I I with, that would, that would be a good starting point. I, they know that that, have we, have we made them aware? We could remind them that that's, yeah, we we can, we can certainly do that.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if another alternative might be to change the zoning so that something like the one oh two grow facility can't be plopped down in the middle of a bunch of businesses, but has to be off in an agricultural area with a lot of land around it to to disturb, to disseminate the smell a little better before it gets to anybody.
Well, everybody, at the time, everybody thought that putting in an industrial location would have been good.
Yeah, but, well, I mean, which we're considering second, we're considering what we've learned since, right? And what's the best thing to do? I mean, I I don't care if we have grow facilities or not, but I think the phrase that Sean used was that the industry needs to take care of this. I think the best way, I don't think the industry is gonna take care of anything. I think what's gonna happen is the people who are making the smell are gonna take care of it or they're not. And this, changing the bylaw for the next bunch isn't gonna change anything for the guys that are already there. So I, I see it as an effective solution for the problem that we apparently are having. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, maybe it's a good idea, but it's not gonna solve the smell problem on one oh two.
So what's our, our, our job is to come up with a, a recommendation for town meeting?
Just a reminder, we'll have next meetings, the twenty-sixth, we have a public hearing on the marijuana by law.
Yeah, and I was hoping really to to find what our position was on this. I'm kind of leaning towards let it get defeated at town meeting. So it stays how it is.
It goes in as this.
Yeah, goes in as as limited to three. And I'm guessing it'll get defeated. And we will end up back here with this. We still have the problem.
Don't we need to make a report of some kind under the statute?
We have to, you have to have a public hearing.
But I think we, after the public hearing, I think we have to take a position and recommend it, that position to the town, I think, under the statute. Pass or do not pass, or amend, or something else.
No, zoning has to the, the planning board has to present the zoning amendment.
I don't know if we can stop it. I don't know if we could stop, if we were totally against it, I don't think we can stop it. I think we might have to pass it along with an adverse report. I'll read the statute, everybody, maybe Brooke can advise us. Can you do that, Brooke? Do you want to take that on?
I can look into that.
Yeah. I mean.
I think that if the selectmen ask us to hold a public hearing on a bylaw proposal, just out of deference to the select board, I think we should do, we should do it. I don't think that we should necessarily agree with it just because they asked for it, but I think we got to ask, we've got to hold a public hearing and we probably have to refer it to the town.
No, we don't have to. We can even vote and put it on the warrant and not still not agree to it.
We can't, we we can't vote on the warrant. That's a selectman's job.